We'll call the regular meeting of the Huron City Commission to order. It is Monday, June 1st, 2020, and 5:30 PM. Could we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Robish.
President.
President. Let's stand and recite the President of the Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to item two on our agenda. The City Commission adjourns to convene as the Board of Adjustment for the following public hearings. Two point one, variance request by Carolyn McMasters/Kim Cheddar. Project address vacant parcel of land located north of Prairie Villa Mobile Home Park. Requesting to allow, one, a helipad including a storage shop and an apartment. And, two, rental storage units where code does not list these as permitted uses in an area zone B2, Central Business District. And Planner Krasten, do you want to tell us about this?
Yes, the hearing examiner heard this and said that after, we'd received two letters in opposition. And also, a couple of people contacted us verbally to voice their opposition. And I understand since then, we have received a petition since that time in opposition of the project as well. As from the planner's perspective, there were no regulatory issues with the project other than requesting the change, the exemption from the code. And from the hearing officer's perspective, he basically recommended approval for it.
Okay. Any applicants here? Kim, do you want to say anything about the project?
I can answer any question that anybody would have.
Okay. Anybody have a question for Kim? Okay, we have a question on YouTube?
No, I just got a comment, we would like people to go up to the podium when they speak.
True. Kim, can you come up to the podium?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Give us your name and address, please, Kim.
Right here?
Yep.
Kim Cheddar, I live right here in Huron.
Okay, the address is?
1920 Valley View Court.
Okay, thank you. Now, any questions for Kim? Yes, Commissioner Harrington?
Kim, one of the letters we got was, they talked about power lines to the north and substations to the east and houses to the south, and they're wondering how you're going to zero that in when the wind's blowing.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't hear all that.
One of them is, one of the letters we get, there's an individual is asking about the helipad and whether if you're going to promise the power lines to the north, substation to the east, and houses to the south. And they wonder how you're going to deal that in with all the wind blowing, so the prevailing wind comes out of the north.
Okay. I've studied this very much so. And I can get in and out of there to the east and the west and never go over any one's structure, housing or the, to the west, there's a building of storage there. And I can get in and out of there each and every time without going over any one's structure always.
Depending on how the winds blowing?
Yes. And the most logical way is to go straight west. And I can gain, that lot is 444 foot by 600 foot. And I can gain enough altitude to safely, on my property or the property in question, get in and out of there very safely without passing over anybody's buildings. And never, ever go over the mobile homes, not even one time, never. And there's a couple avenues, and I've studied this a lot, to get in and out of there very safely.
And why are you not using the airport?
Okay, I can answer that, sir. I do not plan on flying forever. If I was to build a building at the airport and invest the money in that, if you do not own an airplane, you cannot use that structure as a workshop of this or that, or you cannot live in it. And I have no plans of living at this premises at the moment, but later on in my life, I may. If I retire and live winter someplace else, my children live here, and maybe I'd want to come back to visit. And this is nothing definite, but also, the resale value away from the airport would be much better than at the airport because you pretty much have to own aircraft to make work at an airport.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission? Commissioner Smith.
Kim, how much use would this helicopter pad get?
It'll never be commercial use, ever. This is just a personal aircraft. And I assure people that I will not be coming in and out of there on a daily basis, five times a day to give rides to friends or relatives or anything. It'll be a minimal usage in and out. By no means on every day would this be used. I would estimate a couple times a week at this point. And quite frankly, I'm 66 years old. I'll do this for two, three years and it'll be all over, for whatever that's worth.
Okay. Anything else from the Commission? If not, sit down by for maybe later, Kim.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am, could you come up to the podium and give us your name and address and then tell us what you'd like to tell us?
My name is Teresa Gange. I live at 1421 First Street Southwest, Lot 107. Approximately four lots from the vacant lot, he's wanting to put the helicopter pad on. The helicopter has already been brought to this field, and the noise was ungodly. We all heard it. It felt like it was right in our living rooms. We're concerned with the fact, God forbid, there should be an accident. That's a fuel fire. You can't put it out with water. What's that do to our homes? What's it do to the property value? What about the farms around? They have cattle right across the street, horses. I'm sure that loud noise is going to spook them. We have a lot of children. We have a lot of people that work first shift, that go to bed early. We have a lot of people that work third shift that sleep all day. We're very concerned about this going in there. We have wildlife in there. We don't want to lose that. That's all I really have.
Okay, is there any questions? Yes, Commissioner Robish.
Thank you, Mayor. Ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't have my list with me here, but do you have, do you have signatures or?
I am the one that turned in the petition. We had everybody sign that petition except 10 people. And their reaction was, if they put it in, we'll move. And they're renters. They're not homeowners like we are. And I turned that into Shauna.
I think Barry's got it there.
Mm-hmm.
How many do you have there, Barry?
Is this counting?
Or, sorry?
Forty-four.
Forty-four?
Was that turned in before or after the hearing examiner's?
The first thing you had, I tried to chime in. It wouldn't let me. For some reason, I couldn't get it to let me in.
Okay, so the hearing examiner made his ruling before this petition was?
We got this.
That helps me, thank you.
And there's, how many out there, 54?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
If I counted correctly.
I think that's about right. There was 44, 45, somewhere in there, almost 50.
Okay, anything else?
I just.
Commissioner Robish.
I wasn't quite done there, but that's okay. Because I did talk to quite a few on the front row, on the north row, first row, south of the trees. And, well, I just didn't hear any opposition.
They signed it. Every one of them on that front line, on that tree line, are all on there.
I understand. And I did talk to some of them that did sign it. And they told me why they signed it, but I'm just saying, they were out there when Kim came through with his helicopter one day. And quite frankly, they said that they were very surprised that it was not very noisy. I'll tell you what they told me, that's all.
I understand, and they told me something different, so.
I don't know?
I don't know. I heard it. I was home. I came out of my house to see what it was.
In fact, what they told me was, as long as there's a fence up, they don't care. That's quote unquote.
I understand that, because some of us do care about the noise.
Yeah, no, I am.
And a fence isn't going to do it unless he does a noise count, a noise fence. A noise buffering fence.
Yeah. I'm just going by what I personally, that's all.
Anything else, Commissioner Robish?
I don't think so.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, Commissioner Harrington?
That conversation, right, that kind of puts us into kind of here.
I know.
You know, we got their signatures right here, their addresses, their phone numbers, the whole nine yards. And you're saying they didn't sign, they signed it, but they didn't mean it?
That's exactly why they called me out there. That is exactly why they called me out there, Commissioner Harrington. They signed it because, I'm just going to say it like this, they signed it because they thought they were pressured into signing it.
How many told you that?
Three of them.
Okay, so we're down to 43 then?
Yep.
Can I say I didn't pressure anyone? I let them know, this is what I'm doing. You can sign it, you don't have to, I don't care, but I'm signing it and I'm going to turn it in. So I don't know how they felt pressured, but that's fine.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add, ma'am?
No, I think that'll be it.
Okay.
I just, no question. Commissioner Smith? Teresa, on the people that signed, to your knowledge, how many rough percentage of that are actual owners of their own?
I would say it's probably 50/50. They do have a lot of rental properties, but mainly over by where he's building, that's all homeowners. To the south of the tree line, that whole row is all homeowners. And then homeowners go partially to the curve going in. And then all the way down the other side of that street where the tree line is.
Thank you.
Who, ma'am, who owns the trailer?
Pleasant Valley Properties. And I did call him and tell him I was coming. And he said he didn't get notified of meetings.
Okay. So he didn't voice any position one way or another?
Hey, I mean, he doesn't want us to move and, you know, I get that. But I'm with a few other people. If it does go in, I am selling my home and I'm moving because I don't want to deal with that. I shouldn't have to in a residential area. I should be able to have the same peace and quiet that other people have in their homes.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Cheddar, anything you'd like to add before we?
It's an understanding that I came in there with my helicopter to test it out, this and that. Never happened. I've never flown my helicopter there ever, close to that proximity, never happened.
That's probably why they thought it was so quiet.
But, and that's all I got to say is, I never, ever test landed there or did anything like that, ever, not once. And I'd like to reiterate that I can come in and out of there and never, ever, one time, fly over another person's trailer house, shed, property. It's easy to get in and out of there if you know a little bit about it and never come close to someone's structure. And there is two lines of trees between that property and the next home to the south. As far as flying through them trees to get to them, not going to happen. So, but I've never test landed there or anything like that, ever, myself.
But did your helicopters land there?
No. My helicopter never, ever landed there.
So was anybody you know of left?
Yes, yes, someone I knew did it to check it out. So that's the same, that's the same thing, you know, to a certain extent. I didn't mean to evade that or anything, but I personally never did that.
Is that the same helicopter that you would fly there?
Very similar. Yes.
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, Commissioner Harrington?
Kim, do you have another place where you could build this facility that wouldn't have so much, 44 people against it? Do you know?
Believe it or not, I've looked very diligently for a place to build this that would be reasonable to do the other things that I want to do. This isn't strictly a helipad. It's a multiple-use building at my age, hobbies and things like that.
It's not going to be a business.
Pardon?
It's not going to be a business.
Absolutely not a business. And the aircraft will never be used commercially, won't happen.
So you could put it in here?
Well, I've looked rather hard.
I mean, there's a lot of open area.
And I couldn't find any other areas reasonably, within reasonably priced or, you know, just geographically. And I explained my reasons for not being at the airport.
Yeah, there you go, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from YouTube? Nothing? No one to say anything? Okay.
Commissioner Smith, where you close out?
Yep.
My understanding of the request is a little bit threefold. The helicopter pad, which is obviously the point of controversy.
Yes.
But it also establishes a storage shop with an apartment and rental storage units where code does not allow these as permitted uses, so.
And the storage units are not a definite plan at this moment. But I thought, I was led to believe that it would be an opportunity to put this in. And if I did this, these wouldn't be the small storage units. They'd be the larger insulated ones for a motorhome camper. And they would have heat, electricity, a bathroom. And they seem to be popular now for gentlemen that have a camper and a motorhome and a boat and kind of a place to hang out, so to speak. They're becoming quite popular. And this is not a definite plan, but a possibility.
Okay. It appears that there's three different items here, Kim, is why I'm just trying to explain that.
Well, I'll answer any question you ask.
That's okay.
The building that I have planned is, the size of it would be 80 by 100. And a portion of that would be a small apartment at this point. And I do not have plans on living there at the moment, but later on, if, you know, my children are here and I live here and friends, but if I would leave for the winter and want to come back here for a few months in the summer, that I could camp out there is somewhat of my reasoning for wanting an apartment. I would not be moving into that apartment at this point.
Kim, how many total Lakers are there?
5.5.
Is there any restrictions on setbacks or anything with that?
Not that he couldn't meet.
So what are the restrictions of?
There really isn't one for the helipad. Those helipads can, we currently, under our ordinance, allow helipads in any of the I districts, the industrial districts. That's why in the business district, it requires though, a variance. But that was the only one.
Okay, so this is, it's, a helipad is not allowed in a B2?
Right, that is correct.
And what did you say it was allowed in?
In the industrial districts, the I1 and I2 districts.
And if I may say, my reasoning for pursuing this this way, it'd be extremely foolish to build a building with a 50-foot door to get a helicopter in and then not be able to use it for that purpose is why I'm pursuing this.
Okay, Commissioner Harrington?
Kim, did you talk to any of the people that live out there?
I did not.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Kim.
Okay, but like I said, I can assure, guarantee, promise, I will never, ever need to fly over anyone's home to get in and out of there, not even one time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move to motion and discussion. This will, is a variance request, will take a two-thirds majority, is that correct? Two-thirds majority vote? So, do I have any motions?
I would move to approve the variance request.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve all of the things in the request, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Clute?
Over the last six years, we've had a lot of variance requests. And I've tried to adopt a philosophy when I consider these. And my number one factor in denying the request is opposition from people who live in the area. I think these code restrictions, these zoning restrictions, they're of record. If you buy the property, you know what the restrictions are. And when you come in and ask for a change, you better have the support of the area or that variance should not be granted, in my opinion. So that's the number one factor. I suppose that could be overcome in certain circumstances, but when it's so overwhelming, I find this one very easy to vote against. And I was going to ask, how in the world did the hearing examiner recommend approval? But then I see that 40 signatures were not received until after the hearing, so that kind of makes some sense. I can't believe that any hearing examiner would approve it when it's that kind of opposition. So for those reasons, I'm going to vote no.
Anyone else? Other discussion, Commissioner Harrington?
It goes without saying, there's not too many times that I can say I've learned from Commissioner Clute, but that was one of the things that he did teach me a long time ago, that one of the barometers in deciding some of these cases that are so close and so important to everybody is how the neighbors feel. I don't have to live there. Kim Cheddar's not going to fly over my house. But for the people, the 44 people that have voted on this and said they did, would not like it there, it is going to have, it is going to have an effect on them, whether it's their sleeping or whether it's outside with the dogs or whatever, it's going to have an effect. And so I go along with the same token as Commissioner Clute. I feel that the neighbors should have a say, and I think they've had a say. And so I'm going to vote against it also.
Other discussion?
Well, and I, if I may.
Commissioner Smith?
I did second the motion for, for this purpose is to get it to a vote. And, but I also feel in favor of the other two items, Kim, but I just can't get around the helicopter issue with that much opposition from the neighborhood. So my attempt would be to vote against the whole proposal.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, we will go to a vote. All those in favor will say aye, oppose aye, and will require a two-thirds vote to pass. Call and roll, please.
Smith?
Name.
Clute?
Name.
Harrington?
Name.
Robish?
Aye.
Mayor Albert?
Aye. Motion fails, so will not be allowed. We'll move to, let's see, the Board of Adjustment will now adjourn to reconvene as the City Commission. First of all, we will have public forum. Public comments may be sent during the live meeting broadcast on the city's YouTube channel. The link is listed on the city website as www.huronsd.com/city-government. In order to use the YouTube chat feature, please create an account with your YouTube and Gmail or use your existing accounts. Please state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments for public forum? Or do we want to wait a little bit to see if anybody's got anything before we go? We'll wait a few minutes to see if anybody's out there wants to make a comment.
I do have one, as long as we're waiting.
Okay, Commissioner Clute?
That's all right. You, ma'am? Well, I think this is an appropriate time to thank the mayor for his seven years and one month of service. This will be his last meeting and presiding as mayor. And I for one, think he's been a great mayor. And I know you've worked very hard at it and we really appreciate it. And you've been a really calming presence during this pandemic crisis we face. And I thank you for your leadership there.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Clute, I appreciate that. Any questions yet? Okay. Commissioner Harrington, you had a couple of things for us?
I have three things.
All right. Take your time and we'll let people call in.
It's got to be a record, and none of it has to do with a sanitary landfill, so that's really a record. First one up, we got, Huron Community Campus is closing its ACT test center for the June 13th date due to COVID-19. The next available date for the test is July 18th. If you were registered June 13th test, the examiner can request a test date change or pick up a different test for the center for the June 13th. So that was a casualty of our COVID. Election update, tomorrow's election. City of Huron, mind voters, that June 2nd voting will take place at the Madison Elementary School located at 17th and Idaho Avenue Southeast. The polling station will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Those voting in person are encouraged to take COVID-19 safety precautions and to observe social distancing in any wait lines. Voters will select a new city commissioner. And last but not least, I was contacted by the senior center. They're having a lot of people utilize their meals on wheels at this time. and they're having some problems getting volunteers to deliver those meals. They assured me that the meals are not being taken into the apartments. They're being left at the doors, knocked on the doors and the people come get them after you've left, so that, that shouldn't be a problem with that concern, but they are having problems getting the volunteers. They will take volunteers' inputs just for a day. If you want to do it on Monday, you can do it on Monday if you want. Ideally, it's nice to do it the whole week, but they're taking them because, like you say, because of COVID-19, they're getting more people wanting the Meals on Wheels service given to them. So if you would, call the senior center, three five two six oh nine one. Ask for Becky Bartel and she will help set up a volunteer service for you and your group to do that. So with that, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. The Meals on Wheels is a great program. I know there's many service clubs here in Huron that do do that, so I would encourage everyone, it's, it's not only good for the people that are getting the meals, but it's a good public service if you want to help our community. We will move on now, or is there any, we getting, we got a statement or question?
Thank you, Mayor, we do have one comment from Shirley Athlee. She says hip hip hooray. I think she's referring to your retirement.
Well, that wouldn't be quite my words, but close. We move now to approval of the agenda. Five point one, is there any changes to the agenda or a motion on the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay, and we'll call the roll.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Mayor Albert?
Aye. Move to item six, consent agenda. Matters appearing on the consent agenda are expected to be non-controversial and will be acted upon by the commission at one time without discussion unless a member of the commission requests an opportunity to address any given item. Items removed from the consent agenda will be discussed at the beginning of the formal items. Six point one, regular meeting minutes of May eighteen, twenty twenty. Six point two, fuel quotes for city departments. Six point three, accept the resignation of Lisa Boozma from the Gulf Advisory Board. Six point four, authorize the mayor to sign the irrigation contract renewal with the Huron, Huron Country Club for twenty twenty. Six point five, personnel items, hiring for teaching slash, or technology slash assistant library director position. Two, promotion of Bob Simpson to the full-time street superintendent. And three, advertise the street foreman position. Six point six, payment of the bills. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda items?
Move to approve consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor will say aye to approve the consent agenda and nay to not approve. Will need a roll call, please call the roll.
Smith.
Aye.
Cluitt?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Item, move to item number seven, bid quote items. Number seven point one, consider payment request number two by Asphalt Paving and Materials Company for bid number twenty twenty dash oh three, street milling and overlay in the amount of eight hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. And city engineer Rungy, can you tell us about that?
Thank you, Mayor, this is a second pay request to Asphalt Paving for our street milling and overlay project. As of Friday last week, the, the project is actually complete, which is why we were still holding our retainage of seven thousand dollars on this pay request because when we put it in for the commission agenda, the project wasn't quite complete. But death detests have been formed and course taken from what the asphalt that they've laid down and they've all passed, so this pay request here, we recommend approval and then we'll release retainage on the next pay request and with the closeout items.
So all the work that we had budgeted there is completed at this time?
At this time.
Great, okay. We could've probably used twice that much, but we, we budgeted what we could, so. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation to approve the pay request?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of paying the, the remaining of the payment of the, what was budgeted, will say aye, opposed nay, and we'll call the roll, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Cluitt?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Robish?
Aye.
Item seven point two, consider payment request number three by Midland Contracting, Inc., bid number twenty eighteen dash twelve, Third Street Southwest Park, Street twenty, or Third Street Southwest, West Park to Union, in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Again, engineer Rungy.
This pay request is payment for a concrete approach that was poured, placed rather off from West Park Ave. Third Street is now open to be used. Unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to do the asphalt paving until this fall. The road bed is still unstabilized and then some conflicts with construction schedules. We just not gonna be able to get to it until this fall for paving, but it is open for use right now. We do recommend payment then for this pay request.
Okay, do I have a motion on the request?
Move to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to pay Midland Contracting, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye, opposed nay, and we'll call the roll.
Smith.
Aye.
Cluitt?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Robish?
Aye.
Mayor Albert?
Aye.
Move to item seven point three, consider awarding bid number twenty twenty dash eighteen Q by Batumus Road Oil, and again, engineer Rungy.
Thank you, Mayor, city of Huron, we went out for quotes on our Batumus Road Oil. This is the oil that we use for our chip seal projects throughout the city and Flint Hills Resources of Marshall, Minnesota submitted the low quote and meets our specification requirements. They submitted a quote of five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-one cents per ton for the, the oil that we use, which is an MC three thousand oil. Usually we go off from the county bid on this oil. That county bid was five hundred and sixty-three dollars, fifty-six cents per ton with the environment, today, the, the oil has gone down in price, so we decided to do our own quotes because the county did their quotes earlier in the year and we were able to save forty-one dollars per ton by doing our own quotes on this. We expect purchase around a hundred and eighty-two tons. We're looking at about ninety-five thousand dollars in oil for chip seal projects. Budgeted, we have a hundred and, around a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars budgeted for our chip seal. About thirty-three thousand is gonna be needed for the rock chips and then it leaves about a hundred thousand left for, for this oil. So we're within budget and we recommend awarding the quote.
Okay, do I have a motion on the request?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the bid will say aye, opposed nay, and we'll call the roll.
Smith.
Aye.
Cluitt?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Robish?
Aye.
Mayor Albert?
Aye.
Move to item seven point four, consider awarding bid number twenty twenty dash nineteen Q, propane fuel supply. Again, engineer Rungy.
Thank you, Mayor, city of Huron, we received, reviewed and received quotes from propane fuel supply for October fifteenth, two thousand twenty, through April fifteenth, two thousand twenty, it's our winter supply. CHS Farmers Alliance of Huron submitted the low quote and meets specification requirements. Their quote was ninety-four cents per gallon. We usually quote this later in the year, a little closer to when we need the winter supply, but we were approached and it was recommended that we go out to, for quotes sooner than later because of the decline in gas and diesel demands, some refineries have been shutting down, so they expected propane prices to go up in price. So it was just suggested that we get the quotes out sooner than later because a lot of places are stocking up on the propane supply now, so we wanted to get in on that. That ninety-four cents per gallon in comparison to previous years, last year, our, our quote was eighty-nine cents per gallon and last year was a real low year for, for propane at the time. In two thousand eighteen, the, the price was a dollar nineteen per gallon and in two thousand seventeen, it was ninety-seven cents per gallon. So it's, this ninety-four cents per gallon quote is right in there with what we've been paying and we recommend award. We expect to purchase around thirty thousand gallons, which accounts to about twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, do I have a motion on the request?
Move to approve the request.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the bid, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye, opposed nay, and we'll call the roll.
Smith.
Aye.
Cluitt?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Robish?
Aye.
We'll move now to petitions and communications. Item number eight, public hearing to consider the following transfer. One, transfer the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty retail on-off sale beverage malt, beverage and South Dakota farm wine license from La Patrona Carmela Castaneda and Martha Imaia Enriquez, one oh one, Third Street Southeast. Two, La Patrona Martha Alitha Enriquez, one oh one, Third Street Southeast. Do we, we need to do these one at a time, right?
We can do them together.
Do this one together? And item two is just the transfer. Renew the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one retail off, on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for La Patrona Martha Alitha Enriquez, one oh one, Third Street Southeast. Do I have a motion on these two items?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
So as you can tell by the names, the state required us to do the transfer before the renewal because of the ownership change. So we received no comments and we asked for approval.
And this is just one of the partners that's no longer gonna be a partner? Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of agreeing with the transfers will say aye, opposed nay, and we'll call the roll.
Smith.
Aye.
Cluitt?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Robish?
Aye.
Mayor Albert?
Aye. Move to ordinances and resolutions, nine point one, public hearing on ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve dash three dash ninety, personnel regulations and set the second reading for June eighth. Do we need a reading again on this?
We do because this is the public hearing of the change of the death benefit.
Okay, you wanna do the reading for us, Nathan?
Yeah, 'cause I don't know if you want me to go through it, the whole thing, but we did, the biggest things we clarified were, we got some confusion on the, the death benefit for the accrual of sick leave and vacation time and we clarified that a lot more and wrote it out line by line to the people who had, you know, the six hundred or twelve hundred hours based on their hire date from, you know, December of two thousand and five and we just clarified it a lot more in there. So I don't know if any of you guys had a chance to read it or not or have any other questions or it's clear now? Yeah, it's from, you know, from zero, from zero to six years of continued service shall be paid a period of one hundred and twelve hours and we clarified all that. And then the, after seven years, you accrue it at one hundred and sixty-eight hours, fifteen years, two hundred and twenty-four hours and then... Oh, here's the death benefit.
Page seventy-four.
Yep, there it is. The death benefit in the cause of employees of two hundred and forty-eight hours shall be paid to the employee of the final payroll if the employee has worked with the employer for ten years and provided also that the employee has three hundred and sixty hours of allowable accrual still unused. The death benefit in the case of the death of an employee who has seven hundred and fifty, six hundred and fifty-seven hours shall be paid to the employee, the payroll provided the employee has worked for the employer ten years and provided also that the employee has at least one thousand eight hours of their maximum allowable accrual. The death benefit in the case of the death of an employee of three hundred and thirty-seven hours shall be paid to the employee of the final payroll provided that the employee has worked for the company ten years and the employee has at least five hundred and four hours of maximum allowable accrual hours still unused. That's the main things that we updated from the last one.
Is there a, a motion to approve the first read of this ordinance? And set the date for the second reading for June eighth?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Cluitt?
Thank you, Mayor, well, I think you, you did a good job in explaining that death benefit, it makes sense now. Two questions, is this a new thing? Are we memorializing policy we've been following?
This is, this is not a new thing, we've, we've been, this hasn't been reviewed since two thousand and eleven or something like that, I think, as O'Katt said. So we're updating our policy via the ASME contract that we've been following, the rules mainly, so we're just kind of melding the city's policy with the, with the ASME one that we followed for the non-human employees.
So my question is, well, obviously Phil McCaskill just died and we, will his heirs get this death benefit?
No, we did not get it approved in time, we'll be off of the, we have the court.
That's we made it retroactive to his day of death perhaps, I think?
I don't, I don't think so, if that's possible.
So yeah, the second reading, we'd have to look at that.
Well, wouldn't you need to start over, start the whole process again? Could we amend this first reading to make it effective the day before his death perhaps, or something like that?
I mean, if that's a possibility.
As long as we think it's legal.
I mean, we don't have legal counsel to advise us of that. And frankly, I just thought that I, so I haven't really been, I thought that...
Yeah, we talked about it after that, that happened and it wouldn't go in effective till after.
After the second reading, it should be, well, after his death, I don't know if there's legality behind that off the top of my head.
But I think you can make it, I mean, we could vote on making it retroactive to a certain date, that would be my opinion. I'd like to try to do that, so. I guess we already made the motion and set the number?
We made the motion and seconded.
Well, I'd like to move to amend the motion to make it retroactive to the day before Phil McCaskill's death, but I don't have that handy as only a week ago, I think it was on, it was a week ago Sunday. I know it was on Sunday, so it was a week ago yesterday. So maybe retroactive to
Right.
Saturday, what day was that?
It's like May twenty-third.
Okay.
We'll have to check that date.
Okay, that's uh amended, are the uh makers of the motion okay with that?
I need a second to the amendment.
Well, okay, we'll need a second for that.
How seconded, Nathan?
Okay. Does the second for the original motion get with that? Who, who did the second?
I think you're
You're good with it?
Yes, I'm good with it.
Okay. Okay, we'll uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the first reading as amended will say aye and setting the second reading for
Oh, Mayor, sorry to interrupt, but I, now we need to vote on the amendment that added to the motion, so I need to
Okay. First, we'll vote on, vote on the amendment, all those in favor of the amendment to make it retroactive until, what was the date, May twenty?
Twenty-third.
Day twenty-third will say aye, opposed aye, and we'll call the roll.
Smith.
Aye.
Claude.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Robish.
Aye.
Mayor Aller.
Aye. Uh now do I have a motion to uh pass the amended uh motion or the amended form of the uh ordinance and uh setting the second reading for June eighth?
We already had a motion and seconded.
Okay.
I think you just need discussion.
Discussion then.
Sorry about the confusion.
Just trying to confuse them on the last day.
The last day.
One, one second here.
I think the date was the seventeenth, and I think he said the twenty-third.
Yeah, the seventeen, it was Sunday.
But I've got the seventeenth. I've got the text that he passed on the seventeenth.
Was it just last Sunday?
We'll make it retroactive to the sixteenth of May.
Two weeks.
It's two weeks? Oh geez.
I gotta amend the motion again. Go through all the
But at least your experience.
Would someone like to make another amendment? For the date this to be retroactive until the fifteenth?
May sixteenth.
May sixteenth, and this is my last offer.
But I, I, you know, we said we would check the date and we did, so I think we're okay with that motion.
Okay. You're okay?
The intent was to be the day before he dies.
Yes.
Okay. So now we have a motion to approve uh the amended uh reading and to set June uh eighth, no, no, the one June eighth for the second reading. All those in favor will say aye, opposed aye, and we'll call the roll.
Smith.
Aye.
Claude.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Robish. Mayor Aller.
Aye.
I think so too, I'm not sure what
Okay, we'll move to item ten. Ten point one, water conservation reminder, and Commissioner Clute, you're up again.
Well, Rod was just here, I was gonna let him do it, if you don't doubt, so. Uh the, the Water Department would like to remind the public that water restrictions have gone back in place beginning today, June first, and will continue throughout the summer to September thirtieth. So residents that have odd numbered addresses may water on Sunday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. If you have an even numbered address, you may water Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. But no watering at any day is allowed during the hours of ten o'clock in the morning to five o'clock at night in the afternoon. Hand watering, however, is permitted on any day. You can also obtain waivers and and under certain conditions as issued by the city engineer at the request of a city resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, may I comment on that?
Yes, Commissioner Smith.
We put that uh ordinance in place basically last year, correct? For the season of last year, Brett?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yes, two.
Have, have we had any follow-up as to the success of that? When we, when we did that, we were concerned about our peak capacity.
Correct. Um and Rod can correct me if I'm wrong, but last year was an unusual year with with the high moisture that we received through the year. So we did not uh push capacity very much and have a lot of uh peak demand days last year because we seemed to get rain every week, it seemed like.
It was more on the peak demand on the sewer side.
Yeah, right, because we had a lot of infiltration and inflow into our system. But when we put this in effect two years ago, and and the reason we put it in effect two years ago was, uh, and if you recall, it was early in the year, like we had already seen one of our highest days ever of production in May, early May, two years ago. Because we started out the year very hot and we were alarmed at where we were gonna go from there on. But when we, after we put it in place, uh we did not see the peaks uh moving forward. There's various things that that could uh cause that, we could have got more moisture and stuff, I did look at it a little bit. And it looked like we had hot days and it it just looks like it just, we still had the similar water usage, but it just um took the peaks off from the, off from the, the stress off from the system.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Well, if not, we'll move on to department items. Ten point one, water, uh, well. Let's see.
Ten point two.
Ten point two, we already did, we only needed to do it once, you should have learned that by now. Ten point two, consider the following recommendations from the Park and Recreation Board. So uh item number one is not to have youth activities or day camp. And Commissioner Clute, do you wanna fill us in with the board did for recommendation?
Well, the Park and Rec Board met on May twentieth via Zoom. I did uh listen in on that. And uh we have Ron Clark and also Kobe Fleeger uh via Zoom attending this meeting to answer any questions. Uh they voted on a number of items. I don't know if we want, should we take each one in turn, would that be the I, I think that would probably be the best way to do it, that way we could have a little more focused discussion. So if we look at the first one, uh they, they had already voted prior to May twentieth not to have the day camp open. And then they decided to revisit that. And uh they still decided not to offer the day camp. Uh I think the reason they decided to reconsider it was there was such a demand, there is such a demand for daycare. It's a real problem out there, but uh in the end, the board unanimously uh voted not to offer the day camp program, they just didn't think that was feasible, so. So like I said, you, you have Ron Clark here, uh if you have any questions about that, I guess I would move though just to get to the discussion stage that we adopt the recommendation of the Park and Rec Board and and not open the daycare camp.
And it also includes the youth activities.
Well, I'm kinda, I just kept, do you wanna include that?
Well, it is together, it says youth activities or day camp. Do you know what all the youth activities entails?
Well
Both softball and
I'll like, I guess I'll ask Ron that, that is a little open-ended there.
If you can hear me, uh Doug, I guess the situation was we wanted to be consistent with all the youth activities. And once the day camp was uh looked at as, as not having that, the youth activities were in the same vein. And the board felt with the addition of the Huron Little League input that uh it'd be very tough to try to have those children in a supervised situation uh be it uh volunteer coaches or paid coaches.
And I guess the, the reason I was a little confused there, Mayor, was the meeting took those separately, so they did vote on the daycare, and if you look at the minutes of their meeting, then uh a few votes down, they, they talked about youth activities and and voted on that separately, but I see our agenda kind of lumped them together, which is fine.
Is, is that all the youth activities of this are there other youth activities?
There is one, Mayor, um with a association, a tennis association is probably gonna be asking uh with the uh addition of their rules to look at a youth uh league for tennis. That again is not a city program.
Could you repeat that last thing you just said, Ron?
It would be the Huron Tennis Association through United States Tennis Association asking for a youth league for uh the tennis courts. And that is not a city program.
Okay. So that's, so you don't believe that the Park and Rec Board on May twentieth really dealt with that particular question because it wasn't a city-run program, it'll be on city property, but it's kind of a private uh group that organizes this, a tennis enthusiast, is that right?
That is correct, and uh obviously they'd have to come up with their plan and also insurance to allow that on city property.
Well, I, I will say this, uh on the tennis part, uh we did allow tennis to be played on our city courts a number of weeks ago. I don't think that's gone poorly, I mean, I, I live right across the street from them and they've been used, uh you know, there haven't been large groups of people, like we have it the U S T A uh COVID nineteen protocols are posted at each court, I think, uh so I, I probably wouldn't be opposed to that kind of youth activity since we're not really sanctioning it, but I can understand given the situation, maybe, maybe other people have some different thoughts on that. So I might, I, I guess what I'm saying is uh maybe we would, we could, we could vote separately on that issue.
Well, then uh they are planning on starting that till, uh I believe, June seventeenth or eighteenth. So we would have next week, uh if we could see a plan on that, to consider it.
Okay, so that you, we could consider it next week then, is that right, Ron?
That is correct.
Makes sense.
This would be very similar to what Huron Little League wants for the older age groups.
Okay, do we wanna postpone both of those, or are we gonna vote on the day camp?
I would, I would say day camp and the youth activities that the Park and Rec uh department runs, we can vote on that, and then next week, after the tennis association presents their plan, we could vote on that. Would that be a fair way of doing it in your mind, Ron?
Yes, sir, uh that would give them their chance to um get that all organized.
Since that really wasn't specifically on the agenda, I I guess that's how I would view it.
Okay, uh do I have a motion?
Clute already had made a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, uh discussion. I, I guess my problem with this is I can hear it coming already because it did with other things that we've done. Why are we gonna let youth play tennis but not my kid play softball?
Of course, we're not gonna be voting on the youth till next week
I don't
after they do
I don't know.
But it, but that, that's the argument you could make next week, I guess.
I could, but I couldn't.
Well, you could be out there, Mayor, and come to the
I don't know if this new mayor would even allow it.
He would have the chief sitting at the doorway, make sure he doesn't get
I, I, I'm kind of friends with that chief, I know how to pay him off.
I have a question on that. So we will have nothing to do with the youth tennis, but we're saying let's have youth tennis on our courts. Right?
If I can
Next week.
Yeah, doesn't matter if it's this week or next week or whenever.
Well, yeah, it does, cuz that isn't the motion right now, the motion is day camp and youth activities, that's what we're talking about right now.
You will still be here. Okay, we've got a motion to uh approve no day camp. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye, opposed aye, and we'll call the roll.
Smith.
Aye.
Claude.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Robish.
Aye.
Mayor Aller.
Aye. Item two, Commissioner Clute.
The Park and Rec Board did vote to open all playgrounds, bathrooms, and park shelters. Those have been uh shut off with the police tape since uh this pandemic began. Uh let's see where that is exactly. According to the minutes they, they recommend opening that, but also with the recommendation to the public that the children wear masks and gloves.
I should say the children and the parents.
Okay, do we have a motion to uh go with the recommendation of Park Board?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Is it second?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved in seconded, is this, then includes wearing masks, using gloves?
Now, it's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, okay. Uh any discussion, right?
So what if they don't? What if they don't? I mean, who's, who's in charge of that, everybody on their own?
Yeah, that's what recommendations are.
I just wanted to have that clarified.
And you would be cleaning the equipment from periodically, would you not, Ron?
Well, the way we looked at it is we would do a thorough cleaning once and then leave it up to the parents to make the decision beyond that as to the use of the equipment.
And I, I will say that, you know, a lot, a lot of things have changed since, since May twentieth, when the Park and Rec Board met, I mean and the situation is much more dire than it was just ten, eleven days ago, so. But that, at that moment in time, they, they thought it would be a good idea, you know, the kid, the kids are out of school, out of school and and need someplace to recreate, I guess that was the thinking, but
The way they looked at it is excuse me, the way they looked at it is if they were gonna open the playgrounds, we're gonna have to open bathrooms in those locations. the playgrounds, we're going to have to open bathrooms in those locations.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Make a comment on that?
I don't know, make a motion and then...
I'm sorry, okay.
We have a motion, and everything is ready.
Okay, we have a motion already. Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
Doug, you kind of set a mouthful there. Timing is everything on all these items. And I can tell you, being on the task force and being close to the medical community, the outcry in our community right now is to go back to trying to prevent the spread. And it's very apparent with the task force, as well as other business leaders in the community. And sometimes, we're looked at at the city level to be leaders in that march. And I, my concern is, how are we going to monitor the cleaning of those touchpoints on the playground equipment? By self-regulating that to kids, in this case? It's not going to happen. And recommending wearing gloves and a mask, it's a great recommendation, but it's not going to happen, at least in my opinion, it won't. So at this time, while we're right in the middle of another huge spike in our community, I can't get behind opening, at least the playgrounds. Bathrooms, because of the size of the bathrooms, could be monitored for cleaning much easier than Rocket Slide, for example, or the monkey bars at Prospect Park for cleanliness. And so on that, I would, I won't vote in favor of it, but I certainly am not in a position to say it never is going to happen throughout the summer. I would make them a time when the spread is subsiding, we feel a little more comfortable with allowing that, and I would entertain that request again. But it's different than the other program items that we're either approving or denying because of the scheduling that has to happen behind that, and personnel that have to be in attendance for that. So just letting you know, timing is everything, in my opinion, on this matter.
Okay, further discussion?
I'll just mention, as Commissioner Clu mentioned, at the time, it was a situation where the Park Board felt that things were in a very good mode at the time.
Commissioner Harrington?
Yeah, I agree with Brian, having sat in all those task meetings and hearing all of our concerns, and hearing our concerns level going higher each time we have a meeting now for the last week and 10 days. And it isn't subsiding at all. The problem with the children's slides and stuff like that, it'd be ideal if we could lay clean material down there, but we know darn well it gets stolen and be gone. So unless we have a staff person standing there that's doing that every other ride or something, I don't think we could ever protect it from COVID-19. At this time, I agree, you know, as Brian said, you know, who's to say in three weeks we're going to have this in control of and be able to look back on this and say, now we can do something that we can monitor. I'm a duck out of, Brian, I can't do anything without that right now. I couldn't vote for it.
Further discussion? Okay. I guess we're to the point of voting. We have a motion and a second to allow the open of playgrounds, bathrooms, and park shelters. All those in favor will say aye, opposed aye, call a roll.
Smith.
Aye.
Clu.
Nay.
Harrington.
Nay.
Robish.
Nay.
Mayor Albert.
Nay.
Motion denied. Is there any possibility of just opening the playgrounds? I mean, just the parks themselves where kids can run around?
Well, they are.
They're open now.
I think they are.
But we need to open the bathrooms.
Well, we have opened the bathrooms, I believe.
In...
We have opened them when we opened the tennis courts, didn't we?
We had four open in Phase One. And those are Winter Park, the Central Park area, the Ravine Lake, and down at Memorial Park. Just the bathroom, not the campground. And those have been used very sparingly, but they have been open. And they are cleaned twice a day.
Okay, we'll move to the next one, then. Number three, to allow adult co-ed softball while opening the softball and baseball facilities.
Again, the Park and Rec Board unanimously voted to recommend to the commission to allow adult softball leagues to begin practices and league play following their proposed social distancing measures with limited spectators after today.
Okay, do I have a motion on that particular item?
Motion to approve.
They're seconded.
And I see that we added softball and baseball, but I guess it's adult co-ed softball while opening the softball and baseball facilities. Sometimes, the agenda doesn't seem to match up with the minutes here.
The agenda is based on the memo that came from the...
I'm a little confused by this one, too. It says to allow adult co-ed softball, so that we're not allowing men or youth?
Well, the intent is for the men, and they have brought forth the rules that they're going to have league with. And the co-ed is a city program, so that's why it was mentioned separately. Baseball-wise, it's still going to be the Huron Little League that looks at that age group from 13, excuse me, yeah, from 13 through 18. And that would be the two facilities, the two big baseball parks. That would be open.
Okay, is that clear as mine, Mayor? It is.
Yeah, Ron, you're saying that the men's softball league will play. It's just not a city league. They pay money to the city to play there, where adult co-ed is a city league program. Is that what you mean?
Yes, but the men's has also made the request and went through all the protocol that they needed to this point. It's just a matter of, you know, whether we're going to let them play. And obviously, if it's all adult, that makes sense.
Okay, I guess we could have added men's softball there along in front of the co-ed, and we wouldn't have quite so confused.
Yeah, and the minutes of their meeting says to allow adult softball leagues, which would be co-ed or male.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can we, let's just change that then to adult.
Right. Adult softball leagues.
Adult softball.
And baseball?
Well, I think that, is there, was baseball part of that motion, though, Ron? I don't see anything in the minutes there about that.
And then his memo is where we got that from.
Yeah, well, the minutes are the documentation of their recommendations.
The memo is asking for something else.
That's still the intent of the Little League Board, and they're going to be asking for that 13 to 18-year-old age group. And if we allow practice at this time, then we can look at allowing league when the time comes.
Why don't we just say that instead of...
I apologize for not being more prepared for this. I'm just going by the minutes here. So the baseball, Ron, has to be dealt with by the Park Board later at another meeting. And they're practicing now, but the league play will still have to be determined. Is that correct?
They have brought in their rules for that 13 to 18, but they would have to then provide a schedule and the insurance to be able to play.
Okay, so that's a yes, that we have to determine it later, correct?
I would say that...
How does it get to information, right?
Since it's another situation where it's an association, we would have to look at next week for that.
So again, I think the motion is appropriate just to vote on whether we should adopt their recommendation to allow adult softball leagues to begin practices and league play following their proposed social distancing measures with limited spectators after today. That is the motion.
And then, so the other form of the softball would have to be voted on, and baseball, at a later meeting?
If they're not adult, correct? Because that is the motion.
No. Do I have a motion then to...
Well, I think we have.
We got it?
We have a motion from Harrington already.
Oh, okay. Do you want to clarify the motion for me?
Well, I can read it again. It's in your, it's on page, it's on their minutes of the Park and Rec that is in your packet. Anyway, they voted to recommend to us to allow adult softball leagues to begin practices and league play following their proposed social distancing measures with limited spectators after today, June 1st.
But our motion is while opening the softball and baseball facilities. So we can open them up, but they're not going to be able to play on unless they're adults.
The recommendation of the board is what we're voting on, and that is to allow adult softball leagues to begin practices and league play following their social distancing measures with limited spectators after June 1st. And that would be on city facilities, wherever they play adult softball.
Because right now, the restriction on the facilities is family participation, if I remember correctly.
I think so.
The fields are open for recreational family activity. Is that...
That was Phase One, yes.
So this motion would be giving them the go-ahead to form and continue adult softball-level activities?
Phase One was opening of softball and baseball facilities to playing catch only for family use with no league practices. So we already voted on that previously. This is...
My interpretation of the motion is that they're asking to actually implement the league plays.
Right, for adults, right.
For adults, and then the baseball gets thrown in there because of that second tier of Little League from the 13 to 18, or 16 to 18 play, basically.
Right, but I don't believe we're quite ready to move on that, probably, because they are youth. And correct me if I'm wrong, LaRon, but I think the Park and Rec Board kind of wanted to be consistent with youth activities, correct?
Correct, and that's why we're still looking at that 13 to 18-year-old age group and having the correct information from the Little League Board, so we can allow that.
And I don't think that we, so they didn't really vote on Little League, then, did they?
No, all we're looking at is if they want to have, you know, practices and get more organized for it, then so be it. But they're going to have to, you know, bring us what organization through the National Little League that they can, so that we can look at it from there. That includes the Legion.
Okay. Okay, so we're allowing adult softball and open up softball and baseball fields?
Correct.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, we need a second. Commissioner Harrington made a motion.
I made the first motion, did I?
I think so.
Yeah, you did.
Yes.
No, I'll second it, then.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Well, again, I'm, all of these activities, I'm kind of troubled by it, then. Because of the, what we are and what we aren't allowing, there's confusion, obviously, in what we are and what we aren't allowing. I know other communities have opened up for softball play and league activities, but again, we are, we're in the middle of a bomb right now with COVID. And so, again, the timing is just really difficult for us to approve that action, in my opinion.
You know, and not to interrupt, but in my opinion on that, we're dealing with adults here. On that playground, we're dealing with kids and parents. Now, we're dealing with adults. These people, I know for a fact that adults, softball people are getting directed from the ASA National Office on how to set up fields, how to play softball, which is going to be different from what we did before. For example, the umpire and catcher, they will not be stealing the ball, so that they can stand away from the plate and they can call a strike to ball, or they can stand behind, stuff like that. They won't be using the same bat. They've got sanitary stuff that before they switch balls and stuff, they'll clean the balls. So if you're out in the field, your team's playing, they'll use the same ball. They go in, a new ball comes out from the other team. Whole bunch of regulations that do our COVID-19 regulations. So they put a lot of thought into it at the national level. These people in our leagues, they're going to use the same rules. That's the difference than having a lady with five kids down there, and they're not watching it, and one going up down the slide, over the rocket slide, and they'll be cleaning it. That's the difference.
Yeah, and that's a good explanation, Gary. And I did read some of those forewords of what the rules are and stuff.
They're making effort.
Further discussion?
I guess I better chime in on this one, because I think the hardest age group that had to go through this pandemic has been age 12 through 18, because they're expected to have a job, nobody wants to hire them, because nobody can come in to any stores. So they're doing what they're told to do, only what they're told to do, and whatever. So, and I guess to allow the adults to go back and play and don't let the kids go to do that, I don't think that's right, A. And B, look at our age group of this latest pandemic. Look at it. It's not children, it's not older people. It's these people that are going to play softball.
That's where the spread comes in, though, Ron. That's where the spread goes.
I understand. I understand that, and they have... I understand, I understand that, and they had rules before, and if you didn't like the rules, what'd you do? You argue about the rules. They're going to argue about these rules. I understand, that's good for them to do that, that's, they worked hard on doing that. I'm okay with that.
I know, I know that softball leagues have put forth rules that they, they're in for the national. I don't believe baseball has yet, have they, Ron?
They're still looking at, you know, what Little League is doing all over the country, basically.
Yeah, so I-
In this, I'm just going to vote against it because I just don't believe it would be in our best interest to take this age group and put them up there.
They haven't presented any rules yet, though. That's the thing. They haven't presented how, how their programs are, they haven't figured out who's going to play.
This is what I'm saying, I don't want this group playing.
Well, all these, all of these rules will be subject to change in three to four weeks if it looks like things are changing. They get interacted with, they get, get it up there and get it going. What, what age group are you talking about, Mark?
Thirteen to eighteen.
I'm talking about thirteen through thirty-five or forty.
The motion, though, is on adult softball leagues.
Okay.
That would be eighteen and over.
I'd say eighteen to forty-five. I used to play softball until I was forty-five years old, okay? So that's what I'm saying, that's the age group.
Okay, so I'm just clarifying, that's, that's what you have against, you're against adults playing softball?
Not normally.
I mean, in this environment.
Correct, yes.
Okay, I understand that.
Gary, just, just a question that I'm asking. In, in those rules that you, the softball associations coming out with, is there any guidance in there as far as having a, a monitor for this, rather than at the games like Umpire?
Oh, the umpires would be there, yeah. And I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they'll hold them accountable to making sure that the bats are being cleaned, not using the same bat, switching balls, that'd be all in charge of the umpire, yeah.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Gary Nunn, all those in favor of allowing adult coed, adult softball and opening up the softball and baseball facilities, say aye, opposed aye, and call the rule.
Smith.
Aye.
Clute?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Robish?
Nay.
Mayor Albert?
Aye.
We'll go to number four. Keep Splash Central closed for this summer.
Well, this was probably the most difficult one for the board and in our park department. I know Kobe, if he's on the line, can speak to it if we need him to, but he put in a lot of time thinking about this, trying to make it work. It was, and if it was going to work, it would only be in the fifty-meter pool, they'd close off everything else, they would have two-hour increments, they would have capacity limitations, on and on, and with a lot of discussion, the park board voted, it appears, one, two, three, four, five to one to recommend that it not be open. So I'll vote, I'll move to, to get the discussion going. I'll move to adopt the recommendation not to open.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion?
And Kobe is here via Zoom.
I, I really appreciate the efforts that the park department, Kobe, what you guys have put in and a lot of time trying to make this work. I, I just think that the, where we're at right now with the explosion of the COVID virus, and especially in our schools now, I, I think it's probably a bad time to go to the pool.
Yeah, like, like you guys were saying, timing's everything. When we were putting the proposal together, things were looking pretty good, and right about the time we were presenting, when stuff kind of started to kind of go downhill for us, but like Doug said, we, you know, we tried our best, we're on Zoom meetings every weekend with other communities, trying to figure out if we could do it, how we would do it, and unfortunately, kind of with the spike we're having, it's, it's, it's very, it'll be very difficult to staff and to keep people safe, and yeah, it's just a tough spot to be in right now.
And Kobe, Mitchell's probably the only community of comparable size that will be opening, is that correct?
Yep, as far, as far as I know, we, we might have a meeting tomorrow about that, but Mitchell is the only tier-one city that is for sure go. I, I believe, I had not heard from Watertown. They said they're leaning towards no, at least that's what I was told on last Tuesday. So they might post it open, but it did not look likely. So yeah, Mitchell's the only tier-one city that is officially going for it this year.
Other discussion? Gary Nunn, all the, all in favor of keeping Splash Central closed for this summer, say aye, opposed aye, and call the rule.
Smith.
Aye.
Clute?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Robish?
Aye.
Mayor Albert?
Aye.
We will move to number five. Keep the campus center closed to regular church services. Commissioner Klut?
There is a, there is a church that rents a room at the campus center. Kobe, is it thirty-five to forty-five people typically there?
Yes, sir, about thirty-five to forty-five, and they rent two rooms, but we had a couple of different changes if, if it were to go through, but yeah, that was the limit. That was about the limit, we could have any trim anyways, and that's kind of where they're at, so.
Okay, and so that was a little bit of a split vote. A couple people voted to keep it open for those church services, but the majority of the park board recommend that, at this time at least, that we not open it up just because of the numbers of people. So I'll, I'll, I'll again move to adopt the recommendation not to open it up at this time for those church services.
Is there a second?
Second?
Moved in seconded, do not open up the church services. Discussion?
Was there, I got something else. Was there, was there a timeline on that you would discuss? I mean, the, the other churches were going to open last Sunday, and they did not, some did, I guess, but some did not. I just wondered if there was a timeline.
Well, according to the minutes, no, no date, so it isn't like a thirty-day closure or sixty-day. Obviously, that could be, they can make a new recommendation anytime they meet, and they meet once a month. And they, they, if things changed, certainly, we would like to see the campus center used if we could, but.
That's fine, thank you.
Do they, do they rent the top floor or the second floor, so to speak?
Kobe?
Yeah, as of right now, they're renting both of the larger community rooms downstairs, so the piles, when you walk into the left, and the curb when you walk into the right. We had kind of made an adjustment to that, where they would take the pile on the left, and then the smaller rental room that is, got a door that shares between the rooms, so there's less foot traffic through the lobby. That was kind of one of our ways to limit, I guess, exposure to the whole campus center, and then rope off the lobby with just access to the bathrooms. Shane, the pastor there, was, he was willing to do whatever we needed to do to, to get it to work, he, you know, he said he could monitor all that. We would, I would disinfect Friday before work was over for them, and then he would disinfect Sunday after the service, and then I would disinfect again on Monday. So I think we had a pretty good plan as far as to keep things sanitized in there. It's kind of the, one of the big issues is worrying about kids wandering and potentially, you know, with those front doors left open, people getting inside the campus center that aren't supposed to be there, were kind of some of the concerns with the park board.
Also, if I could add, the park board was looking at more rentals or any rentals when the actual offices were open for the Park and Rec Department. So that's going to be according to what's decided for City Hall and any other department.
Any discussion? Gary Nunn, all those in favor of keeping the churches, I don't want to say that, keeping the campus center closed for church services, say aye, opposed aye, and call the rule.
Smith.
Aye.
Clute?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Robish? Aye.
Mayor Albert?
Aye.
Move to item six, open the waterfront and beach area at Ravine Lake.
This is the final recommendation of the park board. They did vote to open the waterfront and beach area of Ravine Lake. They would post signage about social distancing guidelines as a recommendation only. So I will move to adopt that recommendation.
Is there a second? Second. Moved in seconded, any discussion? Gary Nunn, all those in favor will say aye, opposed aye, and call the rule.
Smith.
Aye.
Clute?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Robish?
Aye.
Mayor Albert?
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of all, all those items. We'll move to item eleven, a work session to accept the, accept and review the water sewer rate study by Banner Engineering. And from Banner Engineering, we have Tanya Miller with us tonight.